All right, welcome everybody to our regular May 21st, 2024 City Council Meeting. I will call this meeting to order and as always we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Barb to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And Barb, can you also take role?
Yep. Mayor Smith.
Here.
Colin Dykstra.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Eric Helverson.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Corey Nagel.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Scott Porczatsky.
Here.
Henry Velicker. Nine eyes, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you Barb. And can you also start the introductions of the Department Eds for us?
Barb Noack, City Clerk.
Erin Johnson, City Administrator.
Matt Clatt, Airport Manager.
Eric Bailey, Library Director.
Stephanie Wright, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Paul Benjwell, Captain, Police Department.
Thank you. And Josh is here, he's in the back room running the cameras. And Jared is on vacation this week, so. We have next on the agenda is actually the Consent Agenda. This is where we take each and every one of these items as one motion, unless there's a council member that would like to see one of these items moved to the regular agenda where we would discuss those individually. Anybody that'd like to see anything moved? If not, we need a motion to approve Consent Agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Martin, that we approve the Consent Agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. Next up, we have the Regular Agenda. Again, we have nothing that is going to be different on there. So we would need a motion to approve the Regular Agenda.
Motion to approve the Regular Agenda.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Peterson, that we approve the Regular Agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Again, say no. Motion carried. Non-agenda items, announcements and correspondence. We have, as it's labeled on here, Meet the Candidate. We have Mr. Jeremy Shenicki, who is running for the Wapakia County Register of Deeds. Jeremy, if you want to just step up to the podium and...
Do I need to adjust the mic or is everybody...
Yeah, you do need to use the mic.
All right, this is a little different than the other municipalities I've been at. This is a little larger. But first off, thanks for your time. I won't, I won't stand up here all night. I was at the City of Marion last week and they set a timer for two minutes. So I was a little under, under pressure, so if you got a timer, hit that baby. My name's Jeremy Shenicki. I am currently Deputy in the Register of Deeds Office. Some of you might have done some business there with me before. I see we have a few, County Board Supervisor here. I know Eric a little bit. I've ran across Dave on a few baseball diamonds over the years. But I'm running for Register of Deeds. Mike Mazemki, as you may or may not have heard, he is retiring at the end of his term. And I've been working with him for a number of years now. I'm really looking to this opportunity. He's been a good mentor of mine. He's trained me very well. I'm excited about it. So I just wanted to come here and introduce myself. I'll tell you just a little bit about me. If anybody has any questions about the office, I'm happy to, to help. I don't like talking about myself, so I'll get rid of that right away. I've been working with Wapaka County for going on seven or eight years now. I started in the Clerk of Course Office. So that was, that was a, a little different than real estate. Some might say it's a little more exciting, but I have, I, I really enjoy working with the public and dealing with the real estate records and the vital records gives me a great opportunity. I have a paralegal degree from Fox Valley Technical College. Really just enjoy working with people. I was a Town Board Supervisor for eight years. Again, I can appreciate what you all do. It makes what we do at the town level a little, in my mind, a little small. There's a lot going on here. But the Register of Deeds Office, you guys do a lot of stuff in, in the city here that ends up coming across our desk. I'm kind of excited. I see we got a, a new subdivision coming to town. That's pretty exciting. Some resolutions for some streets being renamed after some Wapaka icons. That stuff eventually will all make its way to our office. We'll make that public record and it'll be there forever. There's a lot of history to Wapaka County. I'm fortunate to be born and raised in Wapaka County. I look forward to continuing to serve Wapaka County. Does anybody have any questions of me or the office?
Jeremy, thank you for coming. We appreciate you introducing yourself to us.
All right, well, thank you for your time. One last thing I want to, I want to mention, and if you haven't been out to our website, please jump out there. We do have a New Land Records System and part of that upgrade was also for property alerts. So you can type in your name with a telephone number, text messaging capabilities, or an email address, and anything that ever gets recorded in our office to your name, you'll be sent a notification. I, I wouldn't necessarily call it fraud protection. It, it's more of an, an alert. So if there's something that doesn't look right and you get notified, you're going to want to pick up the call or phone and give us a call. We can either confirm that something, you know, has been recorded, you know, that doesn't pertain to you, or maybe something got missed. It's not unusual. We have lenders submitting lien releases much later than anticipated. So sometimes it's, it's something minor, but if it does turn into be something that looks fraudulent, that's when you're going to want to probably get ahold of Wapakia PD or the Sheriff's Department and start doing some investigating. So it's a free feature. Don't listen to the late night TV commercials for Title Lock and all that kind of stuff. Take advantage of it, it's a free service. If you need any help with that, feel free to stop into the office or give us a call. We're happy to walk you through that. But thank you for your time, I appreciate it. I'm going to hang around for a little while and then I'm off to another meeting yet tonight, so I'll sneak out when I need to. Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, next up is, as you all have probably heard, this is Public Works Week and we have a proclamation and I'm going to turn it over to Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation is on page 88 of the packet. It's fairly short, so I plan on reading the whole thing, so. Public Works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and whereas the support of an understanding informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems in programs such as water, sewers, streets, forestry, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Wapaka Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, Brian Smith, Mayor of the City of Wapaka, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 25, 2024, as National Public Works Week in the City of Wapaka, Wisconsin, and calls upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, congratulations. You know, this is great that Public Works is being recognized this week and I did get a chance to talk to a lot of your guys today and they, they do appreciate that we have recognized them with this week. Probably the best part of this whole week though was the lunch, the free lunch today, wasn't it? All right, let's move on then. We are under public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience or any staff or council member that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium or raise your hand if you're sitting here and keep your discussion to three minutes or less. Any public input? All right, next up we have the Community Report. We actually have the new, I think it's President, right?
You got it.
Okay. President of the Wapaka Area Chamber of Commerce and the, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau for Wapaka. This is Jeff Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that opportunity to be here tonight and, and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to have a few minutes of your time to, I would say, introduce myself, but for many of you, it's a reintroduction. And as the new President/CEO of, yes, the Wapaka Area Chamber of Commerce, Wapaka Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, and Wapaka Area Chamber Foundation. Really excited to be in this role and have this opportunity to work within Wapaka again. But first, here tonight as a representative of the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network, only four days officially on the job now, but it's a group that I've been introduced to already and look forward to working with very closely. Coincidentally, in my role for the last 10 years, which I'll explain momentarily, one of my roles was working as the primary liaison between the State Department of Tourism and the Wisconsin Arts Board and the statewide arts advocacy group Create Wisconsin, working with rural communities throughout Wisconsin to encourage the investment and promotion of the art. So will be a natural fit and I look forward to bringing some of that experience to the Arts and Culture Network. So as, as will be many of the roles and opportunities I have, I look forward to engaging in that collaboration and really being a, a strong partner from the Chamber and CBB perspective. So for those that, that I'm not already familiar with, I'm happy to be here tonight and be back in Wapaka as the head of the Wapaka Area Chamber, CBB, and Foundation. It's sort of a homecoming of sorts. If you're, if you're not familiar, I was in, at the Chamber as the Vice President of Tourism for a few years back, about a decade ago. And so I've been a resident of the Wapaka area since then. And for, in, in the meantime, I was with the Wisconsin Department of Tourism for about 10 years where I worked for, in the, for the Industry Services Team. So I worked with 27 different counties throughout northern Wisconsin, working directly, daily with the Chambers of Commerce and Convention and Visitors bureaus and municipal offices, county tourism offices, to provide them support and resources from the State Department of Tourism. And so it's a role that gives me a very unique perspective into the operations of local destination development groups and, and local municipalities when it comes to investing in community development. And so I really do look, look forward to bringing that experience here as now leading the Chamber and CBB. In addition to that, prior to my, my time with the Chamber here and then the, the state, I worked for a couple of different nonprofit organizations in central Wisconsin, including both youth agencies and healthcare. And so that's also some experience that I look forward to bringing to this role from more of a nonprofit administration standpoint. So just here to share tonight that I look forward to applying all of those experiences to my role and also to share that we are, and my family are very committed to Wapaka. We've been here for 14 years. We've been very involved in the community and again, look forward to, to growing that in this new capacity. So a little bit about my role and kind of my thoughts for, you know, in my first couple of days and, and kind of what you can expect to hear from me moving forward is first of all, my excitement for the uniqueness of Wapaka's economy. As I mentioned, I've worked throughout the state with a lot of communities, large and small. And one of the things I, I find really incredible and very valuable about Wapaka's economy is its diversity. I've worked with a lot of communities that are, you know, sort of have all their eggs in one basket. And if that industry doesn't do well, you see the community suffer greatly. And that's not the case in Wapaka. We have a very healthy community, economy, a very diverse economy. And so I look forward to being able to work, whether it be manufacturing or the, the services sector, to work across the board and continue to develop and support a healthy economy throughout our community. So heading up three organizations is a, a unique perspective. The first, and with the, the Chamber, I do look forward to working very closely with members and, and really value that it, it is the members' organization and I'm the steward of that organization. And so I look forward to engaging with the business community, understand their priorities and how the Chamber can support those, our member organizations in areas of networking, education, and advocacy. On the CBB's perspective, and it's very fitting this week that, that I'm here perhaps, it is National Travel and Tourism Week where we're recognizing the state's $23 billion tourism industry. And I'm here to, to share that I look forward to using my experience to continue to advance the tourism industry throughout the year and all the seasons here in Wapaka. Currently, Wapaka County has, as of the last metrics, so $160 million in total economic activity driven through tourism, and that was in 2022. But I think what's most impressive and important for you to know as, as municipal leaders is that if we took that on a per household basis, we're talking about $620 per household that our local residents would have to invest in order to replace the spending from visitors in our community. And so my role will be to look strategically at how we're promoting Wapaka and also tap into some data that, that's out there that we can invest in to understand who's visiting and who can be visiting so that we can bring them here to Wapaka. And, and that's not only for a visit, but I also envision and, and know that tourism really serves as the front door for more long-term community development, whether it be working with Aaron and Jared from the economic development standpoint or some of the other Chamber programs. I really see that they work collaboratively in tourism's that first step. If we can get somebody to visit Wapaka, it's likely that down the road they might look at Wapaka for more permanent investment, whether it be businesses or second home or, or just a residential relocation. And the research shows that people, once they have visited a community, are more likely to make that long-term investment. And so I look forward to using our resources and our organizations to work together that way. And then from the foundation standpoint, I look forward to continue to work with the city and the school district to find ways to, or to access additional dollars from outside of the community to support our initiatives. And really underscore, you know, Greg's done a fantastic job of bringing in dollars to support our organizations in the community. And I look forward to working with him to continue in that success and also with our Inspire Wapaka County program. We've got a director vacancy there, so we're working on filling that. And that program is, works to connect students and employers. So look forward to working with that program as well. So with that, moving forward, I look forward to working with all of you, working with the city as a whole. And I want to also thank you for your support of the Chamber. I know that the City Council's always been supportive of our initiatives, whether it be Strawberry Fest or the Fourth of July or other initiatives we might have. And so I look forward to that continued partnership. And I do encourage you to reach out if you ever have any questions or would just like to sit down and talk about the initiatives of the Chamber, the CBB, or the Foundation, or just your vision for the vision and the priorities for the community and how our organizations might support that and work collaboratively with the city. I welcome that opportunity. So please don't be a stranger. I hope you know where to find me down the road and look forward to being in touch. And again, I want to recognize our partnership with organizations around the city, the Arts and Culture Network being one of them and one that I look forward to continuing to support and work collaboratively with. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
All right, next up is actually the Department Ed reports. And I did hear this already earlier this morning. And on average, they did keep it to five minutes or less, so we'll just go around the room. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. The Badger Beamers Car Club held their annual car show on May 11th and it was well-attended. Last week, the county's law enforcement agencies held EVOC training at the airport and wanted to say thank you for everyone and especially Matt Batt for their patience and working with us to keep the airport functional during that time. Master Plan update. The survey portion of our master plan will start next week. There's going to be markers placed around the airport and parts of the city outside of the airport property that they use for the aerial surveying. And so if anybody sees a white cross near their property and wonders what the heck it is, that's what it's for. It's not, you know, and they shouldn't mess with them either. We have some upcoming events. June 1st is a Humane Society rummage sale drop-off. June 8th is the actual rummage sale. Lions Club has their Father's Day breakfast on June 16th. And finally, this last weekend, we organized a fly-out to Arkansas in which 10 people in six airplanes, all that are from Wapaka, did fishing, kayaking, camping, and backcountry flying to remote airstrips. So it was a really good time. Some of us got really sunburned, so. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Matt. Anybody have any questions for the airport or Matt or FBO? All right, let's head on over to the library. Eric?
Good evening. So Libraries Report starts on page four of your packet. Just a couple of quick items to highlight. We do have some new chairs that have been installed at the library in our quiet reading area over by the periodicals. We were able to pick those up as replacements for some well-worn chairs. Thanks to some memorial donations for Jan Boers and Roberta Stobby. So check those out if you get a chance. Excited to report that our exhibit coordinator, Liz Kinnear, was in Washington DC this past week. She was in Washington as the library was awarded. One is, was honored as one of the destinations for the American Library Association's exhibit on the Holocaust. So she was there for special training related to the exhibit and covered by the ALA as part of the, part of the exhibit grant. That's very exciting. Liz continues to do fantastic job and really bring in some amazing exhibits here to Wapaka. Tech Services position opening has posted internally and hope in the next week, week and a half here to be doing some interviews with our internal candidates, of which we have four. Summer, summer library program is going to be getting started. The theme this year is Adventure Begins at the Library. If you're interested, we've got t-shirts. They were designed by staff, they look really great. Library Board did meet last Wednesday and have their organizational meeting. Melanie Peterson is now the new Board President, with Julie Iden staying on as the Vice President and John Turner as the Treasurer. We have one new member of the Board, that is our Youth Onboard, Alden Ross, who I met with this Monday to get him onboarded as part of his new opportunity to work with us as a trustee. That is all of the things I've got to report.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions, comments? All right, let's go on over to Finance. Stephanie?
Thank you. My report starts or is on page 24. I was able to successfully submit the Maintenance of Effort Report to the DOR once in advance, thanks to the Fire District and ambulance service being so easy to work with. So that was pretty cool. The City Hall office staff attended their third leadership training session that focuses on customer service earlier this month. And we've had a lot of good positive feedback from employees who attend that. I will also be attending the GFOA National Conference in Florida next month. I did receive a scholarship to go to this, so. I'm looking forward to not working with some of the other finance officers that are outside of Wisconsin. We had the CEC 5th and 6th Grade Student Stop By the other week as part of their downtown scavenger hunt. It was pretty cool to get to meet the little kids and interact with them and explain what we do here at the City Hall. Kate, Shelley, and Barb did a really good job of interacting and answering their questions and then helping them find their next stop on their map. I also had the opportunity to go to their classroom and present to them. And we went over municipal finance and I gave a brief overview of what each of the departments of the city do and how we all work together. And that's it.
Thanks, Stephanie. Over to Mr. Behrens.
Thank you, Mayor. My report starts on page 25 of the packet, goes on through 28 with a few pictures at the end. As usual, starting on the wastewater side, our airport sewer project has started. There is not a whole lot of activity out there if you've been out there lately. We are working on submittals, reviewing those and getting those approved. We did cut down some trees. We talked to a bunch of property owners nearby. So far, things have been going just fine. We expect digging to start very soon out there. And we have a very tight schedule, so obviously it's on the contractor to, to get going on that. We are, Jesse's working on the C-MOM, which is Compliance Maintenance Operation Manual. So it's a big working document at the plant, trying to get that updated. Last time it's been updated, it's been several years. We had to pay our DNR environmental fees, so this is an annual routine thing. Based on our treatment process, we do have to pay per pounds of whatever goes out in the stream. You can see this year it was reported just over 5,000. That is very typical with what we, I guess, pay every single year. Moving on to streets, so the big facility is done, mostly, echo. We have a few things that are lingering that are left over. We have to finish the pavement. There's an awning that goes on the very front and a couple of minor items, but we are mostly moved in and we're still kind of sorting through and getting things organized. But overall, it's been very well received by staff. We did have our lunch today for Public Works Week, as Mayor noted. It was the first true test of our, I guess, common area, our, our training area, and it comfortably fit roughly 25 people. We are working with the County Highway Department right now in regards to Royalton Street or County Highway K. As we plan for improvements in the River North neighborhood, so as this area develops, we've recognized that there's going to be an increase in traffic out in that area. So Royalton, which is County K, is already a fairly busy street, especially for large trucks. So we're working hand-in-hand with the county on what we can do in the future, plan for something. So something that's probably, that's going to come up this year's budget as a new project in our capital plan for a major improvement out in Royalton to be a safer, I guess, street for everyone, especially with the new development. We planted a total of 60 trees out at the Eco Park. Rotary staff helped us, of course, Park and Rec staff were there. We planted 54 with just city staff and then six from the Rotarians chipped in. So there's a couple of pictures later on that shows that out at the Eco Park and that was supported by a DNR forestry grant, which paid for half of, of the trees, the effort, materials, and everything. So it was a great add-on to a great area. Waterside, we finished up our CCR or Consumer Confidence Report, so we have another year of meeting and exceeding all regulations and standards. That has been published and is out there and reported back to the DNR of our notification to all of our potential customers. Every month, a few new meters are going in, so as development happens, we get new utility customers as well. So it's great to see that it's not just the city that benefits, but then also the utilities. There's new mulch downtown around City Hall, so that was a combination of Jake, the new facility manager, and then also the street guys. It looks great. We had a few trees. One got hit by a truck recently and another one just didn't quite make it. So I don't know if people noticed that, but we'll be looking to replace those in the future. And then finally, one more note on Public Works Week. This is the week. So we do some education this week. It's kind of the point, the, the point of the proclamation is let people know all the things that we do and return their respect, that goes a very long way. Tomorrow, we're going to the school, do a touch-the-truck event with the second graders in a coloring contest. It's always a very fun event. But again, it's just to raise awareness to the, to the younger people that, hey, there's people out there doing things for you 24/7. And we let them know it's not just city, it's county, it's town, it's, it's all over, no matter where they go. So they start recognizing that at a very young age. That's about it. I got a couple of pretty pictures at the end there as well, Erin, so.
Thanks, Justin. Any questions, comments? All right, Parks and Rec, Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. We've had Patsy on staff for a month and a half and it's going incredibly well. We already can't imagine life at the rec center without her. Lakeman Field Project is really moving along. The lights are in full working order, the speakers work, so we're really excited to have everybody out there on June 14th to celebrate that accomplishment. And we have a architectural drawing, rendering of the future concessions and bathroom, which we'll take out to bid here shortly and hopefully have an idea of how much that's going to cost us down the road. And then the infield will be done yet this fall. So lots of great things happening still at Lakeman. Baseball and softball are underway and we had to... Baseball and softball are underway and we had to cancel tonight and yesterday, but hopefully we can make those up and have a smooth spring for the rest of that season. Wapaka Area All-Stars, that's what the W-A-A-S stands for. That is again our rec program for kids with special needs ages five to 18. We had our first event last Thursday. It was a pizza gathering. There's 21 people there. It was really wonderful to see people who have never met come together. That's what we want. We want this family feel and we want people to feel like they have a place that they can belong and come to. We just added yoga to the list of many things that we're doing. So excited about that, too. This Friday, pending good weather, we will have our third grade environmental day at Eco Park. They each have a tree, every kid, 160 trees that we'll plant in addition to what Justin just did. So when they're 80 years old, they can drive past and show their grandkids those giant trees they planted when they were in third grade. And our parks tourism busy. Josh is pretty much a lone person mowing, you know, dozens of hours a week and getting fields prepped for all of the games. Splash Pad is now open. We were able to open it last week. We are gonna, we are gonna really keep an eye on the surface area of the splash pad and we may or may not have to continue to work on that surfacing come the fall. So, that's just one more caveat to that, but we, we hopefully will make sure that that's right by this fall. Brainerd Bridge Island Restoration Project is also complete, so that park is now open. Feel free to go. We are so loving all of this rain because it's going to help all of those native plants and the seeds develop and grow and turn that park into this beautiful prairie and, and wildflower area. And they're still going to come back and plant more trees and will plant more trees and so hopefully we can bring that, that park back up to snuff. And as you can see on the community events, this is a month full of deadlines for registrations. If you know of anybody interested in playing soccer, we have our head, hard deadline on the 27th, which is next Monday, so please remind people to sign up for soccer. And yeah, that's pretty much it. We had our workday last Saturday and we had 10 people come at Riverside Park, lay mulch, clear trails. We had a gutter we had to fix or a corrugated pipe that we had to put lower in the ground, so took care of some things at that park. It was a great day.
All right. Thanks, Laura.
You bet.
All right, Captain Benchwell is in for our fire, or our police chief today.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The chief's report begins on page 31. The Police and Fire Commission met on April 9th for their monthly meeting. During that meeting, the annual elections were held and everything remained the same. Brian Gilvent was named chairperson, James Schultz was named secretary, and Commissioner Romy Youngers was also appointed another term. The commission also reviewed the code of ethics. Also, Officer Kyle Holden had successfully completed his probationary period. He was hired in October 24th, 2022, and our probationary period is 18 months. During those 18 months, he was evaluated monthly by his direct supervisors, where they went over various categories. Won't list them all, but some were operation of the squad cars, geography, patrol tactics, officer safety, criminal law, and other various categories. So, we're very excited to have him. Drug Takeback was held on April 27th at the police department. During that time, we took in 25.6 pounds of medication. And important thing with drug takeback is it's preventing those medications from being flushed down the toilets and they're disposed of safely. And lastly, last week, I don't have a fancy proclamation, but we did have National Peace Officer Week, which is the 12th through the, I don't know, my calendar's in front of me here, but anyways, we had that last week. John F. Kennedy in 1962 proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officer Memorial Day. And the week is basically dedicated to honor the peace officers nationally that have paid the ultimate sacrifice. And we did have a luncheon on Wednesday at the police department. And lastly, we had 714 calls for service in the month of April, so continuing to stay busy. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. All right, let's go over to IT. Josh?
Been doing work at the wastewater treatment plant. They've been added to the city phone system and they're getting their new computers hopefully this week. It's kind of the last part of everything, all the residuals from the new public works building and getting stuff done related to that. We've made some phone line changes, dropping some old landlines and consolidating that to our connection at City Hall. If you looked up when you were in the parking lot out back, the old tower is completely empty. Everything's operating off the new one and we just got to figure out a day and plan to get that old tower done, down. Related to all the stuff with the new building and moving buildings around and the towers and all that stuff. There are a lot of different internet and phone changes and with all that, so far we're up to about $5,000 a year in telecommunications expense savings. And there's a few more things down the road I'm hoping to do to consolidate a little more and save a little more money on that. Electronics Recycling was held on April 26th. We collected a little bit over 17,000 pounds worth of items. We've been holding that event for 13 years. We've had 16 events and we're just over 375,000 pounds totaled from all those events. And then have done a little bit of work at Lakeman Field with the network over there and getting some things interfaced with their new systems.
Thanks, Josh. All right, let's go to the clerk's office. Barb?
Thank you, Mayor. My report is on page 41. Lori and I have been working on updating the city directory with the new appointments from the mayor. So, once that is done, we will send out an email, so you can save it to your desktop or Josh will also put it on the website. And I have almost, all the oath of offices have been taken. Everybody's been sending those back. And the code of ethics went to all the meetings, the main meetings. Filed some reports with the county and with the DOR that were, came due on April 30th. SmartGov, our online application system, we have added three more, the commercial tree operators, the garbage haulers and the scrap dealers are now online. And we've had a couple apply for those, so it's working. And then the board of review is set for Tuesday, May 28th at 10:00 AM. That's all I have.
Thanks, Barb. All right, let's go over to Erin.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Good evening, council members. My report starts on page 42 of your packet. I'll touch on a few of the items. Number one, we had a Gold Cross meeting. The consortium did in Wayuga earlier this month. And they presented a plan to add an ambulance and also add areas, three townships over by the Greenville area. The result, that is resulting from the town of Grand Shoot, basically moving away from Gold Cross and doing all of their EMS calls through their fire departments, starting in 2025. Greenville was considered, considered a part of the Fox Valley Consortium, which there is no subsidy to that. But they were the very, very far outskirts of it and they relied on Grand Shoot's ambulance to serve them. Now that Grand Shoot is, does not have that ambulance through Gold Cross, Greenville and that area is left with no provider. Gold Cross is their best option and that is leading to the extra ambulance. We've talked in the past a little bit about how expensive an extra ambulance would be for just our consortium if we didn't add the volume of extra population and extra calls. So ultimately, this is doing that. It's adding that revenue. It's going to cost us a little more. I believe it was about 15,000 or so dollars extra in 2025. But it does result in, in ambulance being in, located in Wapaka more often than it currently is in our three ambulance rotation. So, Gold Cross is still waiting on Greenville to make that final determination, but all signs are pointing to Greenville voting on that and the other two municipalities. We can certainly have Gold Cross come and present more information as well. Also wanted to give a thank you to Alderman Nagel for his help in coordinating the youth on board tours. So all of our youth, there's 11, I think eight of them were able to make it earlier this week and tour City Hall, the sewer plant, the new public works facility, the airport, the PD. We did miss out on the library and the rec center, so we apologize for that. We just kind of ran out of time and those were the two facilities that the youth were the most familiar with. So, thank you to everyone who helped out. I think the kids, I think the highlight was the very end when they got to jump on the flight simulator with Matt at the airport. Also wanted to thank a number of people for dumpster days. A, I'll thank Mayor Smith for the idea. It was a successful event. And this is something that we've been talking about for a number of months and an idea that came up in dirt due to Mayor Smith and, and ended up getting executed because of the work of many, including Jared, the Public Works Department. And specifically want to thank Roger Hanson, Brogan Kenziora, and Zach Thorne for their willingness to work on their weekends to do that. And I got to work with them and I think actually everyone had fun. So, it was a big success. We did have five dumpsters, large dumpsters full from Falk's. Lot of city residents showed up and got rid of a, a lot of things that maybe you would have seen in yards and we would have been processing code violations for. So, that was good. And then also two big things of scrap metal from Alter Metal, Alter Metals, so. Also wanted to note that we have a couple of meetings coming up. Board of Review, May 28th at noon, so the day after Memorial Day. And then we also have the Joint Review Board, so Talking TIFF and Updates for TIFFs on June 11th. I do want to give Laura a bunch of credit. She didn't mention it. I'm surprised she didn't, actually. We, I was able to attend a Town of Lind board meeting with Laura, where Laura presented the idea of a voucher system. A lot of you have heard how expensive it is for Town of Lind residents for a long, long time, for decades, really. And the sentiment at that board meeting was very, very, very positive. No action was taken and that will be taken or is expected to be taken in their budgeting process. But it did, for all intensive purposes, sound like, sounded like everyone there was in favor of carving out some money to allow some of those kids to participate at more affordable levels. So that was great. Good work, Laura. And we did get our 2023 draft audit financials, this just draft form right now. Stephanie and I will have to meet with them before it's all finalized. But all in all, 2023 was a very positive year financially for our general fund and most all of our funds. So we look forward to talking about that in more detail once that gets finalized. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Erin. Eric, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just got something on my watch and I want to, I always get this confused, but it's just saying that the Wapaka area is under a tornado watch until 12:00 AM. So, can you tell us what that means?
So, with a tornado watch, we're probably technically under a tornado watch from early May until the end of September. It means conditions are right. But when they put an actual watch out, it means that there's enhanced conditions out there. So if we look out into western Wisconsin right now, probably still in Iowa, there's a system moving across to about 65, 70 miles an hour. And we should see that about 8, 8:30 tonight and. Not something to play with tonight. We had zero severe weather last year. We had one, or a severe thunderstorm warning last year. So warning means there's actually something coming. A watch means it's just favorable for it, but get ready for it tonight, I believe.
Thank you, Eric, for that. All right, let's move on to unfinished. Oh, I'm sorry, Colin, go ahead.
If I could make a comment about our, our reports today, I'd like to. It's, one of our goals as a city is to work on collaboration. We talk about that a lot, you know, as our, our, when we're talking about how we're going to work together. I'd like to point out all the collaboration that was talked about in this meeting just now by all of our department heads. Starts out with the Parks and Rec, working with the DNR for Brainerd Bridge. They brought the CEC involved into it. They got somebody else involved. Third graders are planting trees. If you go down to the next one, we've got the police, our local city police are, are working with the county police to do their training at the airport. The airport got involved with that, another collaboration. Public Works also worked with the Rotary to plant trees. We also have Public Works and our IT department working really well together. We've got an alderman that's working with the youth on board. The airport and Alliance are going to be doing a Father's Day event. We had this dumpster days, another collaboration, and then the Town of Lind. And I think everybody involved in these things and the other things that we're doing that are great collaboration should, should know that it's appreciated by the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Colin. Okay. Ready to move on? Unfinished business. This is ordinance number 082024, an ordinance amending chapter 17 of the zoning code, and this is the second reading. Erin is going to step in for Jared tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. This is on page 89 of your packet and as Mayor Smith did note, this is the second reading. So you guys are probably pretty familiar with this. This is a pretty simple ordinance change. To summarize, this is changing the lowest point of any sign in the downtown zoning district, where instead of 12 feet at the bottom, it would be 10 feet at the bottom. Looked at some historic, I know Jared looked at some historical pictures and references and, and thought that this fit. And I know there's been some interest in, in placing these signs there. Also, a maximum number of projecting signs on a multi-tenant structure is one per unit, per, or per tenant, with the minimum separation of 15 feet from the other sign. So those are really the two fairly simple changes in this ordinance. We have not heard any really negative feedback on this as we've gone throughout the process and we would be looking for action tonight.
Thanks, Erin. We did a test. We had Erin go and stand underneath one of the 10-foot signs and he jumped and he was still three feet short, so we figured we were good.
Luckily, I'm a judge.
We need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Nagel, that we approve ordinance number 082024. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Colin Dextrow?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Helverson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatki?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Corey Nagle?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, next up, we have a request from the Wapaka Community Arts Board, the WCAB, for street closures. Use of City Hall parking lot, use of bandstand and front lawn for the 18th Annual Arts on the Square and Articipation Week to be held Sunday, August 11th through Saturday, August 17th, 2024. And Marcy is here, so, Marcy, hi.
Hi. That's it?
So. Yeah, I, you know, this is your time to just tell us about the, the event.
Okay.
I'm assuming there, if you have any changes, that would be nice for us to hear those.
I do have a couple of things I forgot to put on this letter. I don't know if I'm allowed to do that or if I'll have to come back. Okay. So, you just named all the things, so the closing of the streets, the various dates. And just to let you guys know that we work really closely with the city on this and we draw up a memorandum of understanding or, is that what it is? MOU? To make sure that everybody knows who's doing what. So for instance, the city guys put out the, the street blocking things and the cones and stuff like that. And we take responsibility for clearing the streets of parking when those streets get cleared and we also notify all the businesses that are affected by this. And it's gone really smooth. Every year it gets just a little smoother. So I just wanted to note that. The thing I forgot to put on here, number one, we have had a lot of feedback from people asking about handicap parking. So I think instead of saying we will have handicap parking, that's something we'll probably work with the city guys on, just to make sure that we have some designated areas. I know a couple of years we made our own signs and put them up, but that's been a request and I think it's really important to make the event accessible to people. And then the other request that we got was on the opening day, Sunday. So Sunday, August 11th has turned out to be kind of a big day for us. So we start with a kids' bike parade. They decorate their bikes and then they do a little parade. We have a community art project that- parade. We have a community art project that people work on. We have a sing-along in the bandstand. We're going to do a flower bar this year where we're funding a local farmer to provide flowers and show people how to make bouquets. So, people go home with a free bouquet. And then the Central Wisconsin Symphony Orchestra is coming again with their steel drums. So, that's a really fun thing. And with all of that activity, it turns out that people come for the bike parade and they stay all the way through the afternoon. And we don't have a porta potty set up and we're wondering if there's any way for that day we could have access to the bathrooms. And if not, we have to make plans for a porta potty and then where we're going to put it and all that jazz. So, that's just, I know I'm throwing that out there, but it's something that we do need to talk about because kids have to pee, so.
Yeah. Well, Marcy, somebody will get in touch with you. You get in touch with them.
Yeah, in the past, we've had some, some events during the week where we've had the lobby open and the libraries closed and the city halls closed, but people can get to the bathrooms. But I don't know if that's kosher or not, so we'll talk about it. Okay. So, other than that, you know, we're going to start on August 11th with all those events that I mentioned. We have at least two or three events a day this year. It's been really great because we have even more people adding on events. So, for instance, Park and Rec is doing the movie down at South Park, but they're also getting bouncy houses. And I think I get it now. So, like you have Schindig involved because it's Wonka. So, it's a candy fest. That's awesome. And then we have the library program is doing a program on the front lawn on Tuesday. The Opaque King and Inbetween Retailers Downtown are creating their own event for Thursday and they're planning on having some food trucks. And then all of the other events that we have planned throughout the week leading up to Friday, the street dance with the Jimmies. The main guy in the Jimmies just got a Whammy Award for Best Organist in the state, which is really cool. And then Saturday, just the festival, forty artists and workshops and demonstrations, jazz tent, main stage, music, food. And we also have a dance stage this year, again with the high school dance team, the senior cardio, cardio drummers. And we also have the Mung community coming and they're going to do some traditional Mung dance this year. So, we're pretty excited about the whole thing and appreciate all your support and allowing us to close the streets for all those different activities. Anybody have a question?
Thanks, Marcy. I believe it's eighteen years. This is the eighteen.
I know, it's eighteen.
Yeah, it's crazy. So, as Marcy has said, WCAB is requesting, as I said, street closures and using the front lawn and so on. So, we just need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
By Martin, second by Olson, that we approve this request. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Marcy, good luck.
Thanks a lot. I just want to remind you all that the library exhibit room has the Shine exhibit, the story of the project up until right now. And we're still proceeding to work with the city and the foundry and Fox Brothers to do the installation. But go and check that out because it's a really cool, cool exhibit. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, continuing new business. We're going to go down to a proposal to change Parks and Recreation Software Management System from ActiveNet to RecDesk. Laura, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so we've had ActiveNet since 2015 and I believe at that time, almost ten years ago, it was probably a really good system. Since that time, other systems have advanced and become way more user-friendly on both sides, the user side and the backend. And ActiveNet has, has really stayed in an archaic format and has not been great for a lot of people. So, we started doing research, actually in the beginning of February, to check out other management systems and really narrowed it down between Civic Rec and RecDesk on, on what we liked. And I also talked to a number of different directors across the state on what they use. Both said Civic Rec and RecDesk were, were pretty good systems. Civic Rec, as you'll see in a second here, does cost more, but you definitely get more with that. So, thanks to Steph and really thanks to Josh. He, he's, I'm a big picture thinker and he, he goes down to the details. And I'm really thankful for that because he took time to look at how this compares to our current hardware. And believe it or not, we've got so much hardware out there when it comes to the beach, Swan Park, the senior center, and then our office. We wanted to make sure that these systems were compatible across the board. So, as you can see on the chart, ActiveNet's annual cost comes to about eleven thousand five hundred. Civic Rec would be seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven. And RecDesk is sixty-eight hundred. There is an initial startup cost of over fifteen thousand dollars with Civic Rec. In addition, they all have pretty comparable credit card fees. We would have to go third-party with Civic Rec and RecDesk. ActiveNet does have their own credit card system. With the annual increase, Civic Rec is the only one that has an annual increase and that's five percent. So, already they're higher than RecDesk, plus they would continue to increase. And I talked to RecDesk about this and they said, we want to give you a flat rate. The only thing that would cause you to go up is if you, if your programming blew up to the next level. And that would then raise to about eight thousand something. So, it still wouldn't even go up that far. The renewal, it's twelve months for ActiveNet. So, the reason why I'm bringing this to you now is because our ActiveNet contract ends at the end of June and I want to get a letter to them as soon as possible to say, we want to terminate services because we still have to hold on to them until June of next year because it's a, it's a year-long contract. It's only sixty days with Civic Rec and RecDesk says you can cancel at any time. Ultimately, they want to work with us and if we have concerns, they want to help rectify that. The, there is no GIS right now with ActiveNet. So, we have a lot of people from outside townships who are putting in the wrong address or people who can't even identify what township they live in. So, they're putting down the city of Opaque instead of a township. And what Civic Rec and RecDesk have is for a flat fee, they can, they can download or integrate the GIS system. So, when somebody puts their, their address in, it'll automatically tell us which township or where they live. We currently have team sideline with ActiveNet because we need assistance with building the teams and the brackets. And we won't need to use that team sideline for the other two programmings because they have that embedded in what they do. There's no training costs for RecDesk, but there are training costs for ActiveNet and Civic Rec. And then you can see with the hardware, this again was thanks to Josh. Best-case scenario with Civic Rec is we might have to spend thirty-nine hundred and worst-case is fifty-two hundred. And then with RecDesk, we might be able to only have to spend the twenty-five hundred dollars or it could go up to forty-two fifty. So, you can see on the bottom line, the total annually for, if we continued with ActiveNet, it would be fourteen thousand one hundred and twenty-four. If we went with Civic Rec, the first year would be between thirty and thirty-one thousand dollars and then ten thousand after that with a five percent increase thereafter. And if we went with RecDesk, it would be twelve thousand five hundred to fourteen, fourteen thousand four hundred and ninety for the first year with, with a pretty flat fee of eight thousand eight hundred every year thereafter. There probably will be an overlap period next year because the smoothest time to transition to new program is going to be January one. We have the least amount of programs happening. That's when we open up for shelter reservations. We can trans, transition any minor registrations that we have. And then we would have both programs most likely until we're done officially with ActiveNet. But we're hoping to recoup those funds by, within two years because we're going to have a difference of five thousand three hundred dollars a year if we don't go with ActiveNet. So, we're, we're, the Parks and Rec approved to change to RecDesk. So, we're asking for, for city council to approve the change from ActiveNet to RecDesk.
All right. Thanks, Laura. Anybody have any questions? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve entering into an agreement with RecDesk for an annual fee of, what is it, six thousand eight?
It would be six thousand eight hundred with them and it would be about eight thousand eight hundred with the third-party credit card because we have to pay that three percent fee.
All right. Any other discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Laura. Nick, well, you're still up here. Next up, proposal to add a watercraft rental station at South Park Boat Launch.
Thank you. So, a little background on this. When I was first hired in July 2022, I was approached by a different vendor to put a rentable watercraft station for kayaks and canoes. And they wanted an upfront fee of eight to ten grand to get this started. And then we would recoup about ten percent. So, it would take us a number of years to even start making money on, on this. So, I approached Tim Lankie at Adventure Outfitters and asked him if this is something that they could do. And, and, and we kind of tabled it. He got busy, we got busy. And then I was approached by the Surfshack LLC a few months ago. There is no startup fee for, for Surfshack and then we would still get a percentage of ten percent of, of their total earnings, which they are estimating between three and six hundred dollars. I called up Tim Lankie again just to make sure, like, is this something you, you want to go in business with us? I would like to stay local. Otherwise, I'm going to pursue this other thing. And Tim Lankie does not have the means at Adventure Outfitters to do an online rentable system, which Surfshack has. And so, he essentially said he would be fine with us moving on with Surfshack. That being said, Surfshack LLC is going to provide, starting with six kayaks, and they could potentially grow to ten. They're going to offer the PFDs, the paddles and, and the watercrafts themselves. They will conduct weekly maintenance on everything. Their maintenance number will be on the rack itself. So, if there's any issues, we won't be getting the phone call. Instead, they will and they'll come out and, and run the service on that. And as I mentioned, they do everything online. So, if you can get on the internet on your phone, you can rent these kayaks. And they will even weed back around it and they'll take the whole device away for the winter. So, it's out of our way and then they'll bring it back next Memorial Day weekend.
I've never seen that before.
Yeah.
Sounds like a cool concept, though.
They're, they're out of Madison and we are looking to put the kayak or this, this structure down by the kayak launch, by the boat landing at Lower South Park area.
Do they supply everything?
They would supply everything. Yep.
Okay.
Do they have someone there to, to service that or, or give out the personal flotation devices, et cetera?
No. So, when you, I, when you go online to rent it, you'll get a code to punch in or some sort of activation device where everything will be accessible to you. And then, and then the charging will start at that time. And you can see on the memo here, it'll be ten or twelve dollars for the first hour and then nine dollars thereafter. And then once we get tandem kayaks, those will be seventeen dollars and then twelve. And so, you'll, essentially your credit card on file will be charged until you return that, that. So, that is incentive to bring it back.
All right. Dave, go ahead.
I did read through the information and just make me feel more comfortable with the insurance part of it. Liability, you got kayaks, you got water.
So, they have liability and, and then we, I assume this would fall under our Parks and Rec liability too. But that's an assumption. So, maybe something we can talk about too? Huh? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. As long as they provide and name theirselves as the city has additionally insured. Many situations like this have happened in the past and that's our process and that's always been fine with our insurance company.
Okay. Anybody else? Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Martin, second by Olson, that the council approves moving forward with an agreement to allow Surfshack LLC to rent watercrafts at the South Park Boat Launch. Any further questions, discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. They'll have them up there before this weekend.
Nice.
Wow.
All right. Next up, we have a preliminary plat for River North, River, River North Ridge subdivision, which is on Wildton Street. And Aaron again is stepping in for Jared.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, this one starts on page one twenty-four of your packet. This one, this process, we don't see very often, first time since I've been here. But it is a review of a preliminary plat, which would be for the single-family housing, thirty-five lots as a part of Phase One in River North and the Tykor development. This is actually a step that the city of Opaque uniquely has. Not that others don't, but not everyone does and it's not required per state statute. Per state statute, it does say that state, the state has to review a plat and then Plan Commission and City Council then have to review a final plat and approve it. Our ordinances say that we have to come forward to Plan Commission and City Council with a preliminary plat, which I would associate a lot with a site plan for a development. That is a lot of the things that you see in the comments that you see on the memo that Jared put together, is much like you see in our site plan process in which Public Works and Strand and Jared will put together comments. We'll get them back to the developer and then they'll make the changes on that document, on that site plan, or in this case, on the preliminary plat. Now, from here, so when you're, if, we are asking that you approve the preliminary plat per our ordinance, but you'll see it again. So, after this, it will go to state. I talked to the state today. They expect it to be two to three weeks, which is actually much faster than I thought it would be at the state. It's really a technical review. And as long as it doesn't border a state highway, which it does not, it's close, but it does not border a state highway. And as long as it does not border a body of water, then it goes pretty quick. So, it is possible that the state, our plan right now is to bring it to the next Plan Commission, which is in June. And then city council would see it in the second meeting, the final plat approval, the second meeting in June. It is possible that it comes forward as a, a conditional approval because it's possible that the state has not approved it yet at Plan Commission, but it is very, very likely that the state will have approved it by the time you see it again in the second meeting in June. So, you can see, you can read through here all of the comments that kind of were gone back and forth with Tykor and Veerbacher. And I, we do have Brad here from Veerbacher, who Jared has been working with. I will pull up kind of on the screen what this plat looks like. Brad, do you have anything you want to add?
No. I'm really here for questions. If anyone has any technical questions about layout or the process, anything like that. I understand, like you said, you haven't seen this in quite some time. So, it's kind of exciting or intimidating. I'm not sure which one.
Anybody have any questions? Who's online?
Also, well, it says Alex and Wade. I don't know if both of them are online.
Yeah, I had a snap. This is Alex. Wade is not with me, but I'm listening in. And again, any questions, we're happy to answer.
All right. Thanks, Alex. All right. So, the request is tonight to approve the preliminary plat for the River Ridge North Ridge subdivision. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Motion by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Porczatsky, that council approves the preliminary plat for River, River North Ridge subdivision, which is on Wildton Street. Any further discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right, Brad.
Thank you.
One more, one more step closer here.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. All right, next up. All right. Next up, we have, uh, conditional use permit for Tim Gorky and Andy Krieger owners, and Wayne Kane as the agent for 217 South Main Street. Again, this is, uh, Aaron stepping in for Jared.
Thank you, Mayor. This memo is on page 129 of your packet. Um, and this is a conditional use permit for Aquamos, as everyone knows it, on 217 South Main Street. Uh, they are asking for a drive. It's not a drive-up, but it's kind of in the code as a, it's a walk-up window, in which, uh, just in speaking with those owners, I know they do plan to do some ice cream and other things out of that window. Uh, we did get some feedback when people thought it was a drive-up window, and they were wondering how that was going to work, and how that could disrupt things on Main Street. But we were able to clarify that it is a walk-up window. And it does, it does meet, um, it could be a bike. Uh, it does meet all the zoning requirements in the downtown, or in the downtown district. As far as conditions, uh, Jared does not have any conditions that are outside of, uh, what conditions or notes that we would place on every single conditional use permit. And I know that it does come recommended from Plan Commission for approval.
All right. Uh, anybody have any questions? Anybody would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the conditional use permit for 217 Main Street, South Main Street.
Motion by Dextrow, second by Hagan, right? To approve the conditional use permit for 217 South Main Street. Any discussion? Again, Barbara, call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Demetri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Halverson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Uh, next up, uh, Jared picked a good week to.
I was gonna say, this is starting to feel pretty intentional.
Churchill Street Corridor Plan, uh, the official approval and adoption. And again, this is minus Jared, so Aaron's stepping in for him.
All right. Thanks again, Mayor Smith. Council members, this one, uh, you've seen before. Uh, several months ago, I can't remember the exact date, but I know this was presented. Andrew Dane was here. We presented a plan at that time, the Churchill Street Corridor Plan. It does start at one, page 139 in your packet. Uh, since that time, there have been a couple of people that have suggested that we send it out, um, direct property owners in that area. I did send it out. Um, I didn't actually get any feedback back. I do know we have one council member that received some feedback. I know he's going to share it tonight. This plan, uh, really is something that we, I suppose, could have adopted the first time we looked at it. I think it's probably good that we didn't and allowed other people to review it. And I think we'll get some good comments from it. But I want to remind, uh, everyone that this did go through a, a survey process in which we got 166, um, survey responses. There was an open house at the Halloween event that we asked some people on. Actually, Andrew, who did, Andrew Dane, who did this, did actually go door-to-door to a lot of the businesses on Churchill, and did talk and speak with them, and some of these things came from that. I've gotten a couple of questions from a couple of different council members that wanted to just clarify, hey, is this, like, when we adopt this plan, are we, like, tied to the things in that plan? And the answer is no, we're not tied to them. That being said, there are a few things that I would like you to consider before adopting it. And that is, you know, the key things are future land use. Is that what we want this corridor to be? Some of the goals, uh, attract and retain businesses, promote housing investment, enhance walking and biking conditions, strengthen the corridor's image, improve access to school campuses, and improve the Kerry Mill Pond, or at least explore improving the Kerry Mill Pond. You know, if, if there is a general consensus that that is not the direction we want to head, and we don't want to explore options, with those goals in mind, then maybe we shouldn't adopt it. Uh, however, if that's the general direction we want to proceed, there are a number of things and a number of options, and tons of discussion we can have about how to do those things moving forward. The reason we adopt plans at the City Council level is not to lock us in, but it is to really show, uh, grant funders that we've put thought into it, that we have taken efforts, that we have reached out to the public. And that opens us up to better funding opportunities for projects that may happen in the future. We don't have, uh, any specific plans to do large construction, uh, on Churchill Street right now. You know, a lot of these things happen 10 years after we start talking about them. Uh, right now, this is not in our, in the next five years. However, we don't know when those opportunities may come up. So, um, we are asking as staff, uh, for council to consider approval, uh, as it is our understanding that that is the, the general direction that, uh, council would like to see. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, the only thing I can add, and Aaron did say this, but I want to emphasize that the reason that you're seeing it again, uh, originally, we didn't think that we needed to approve it, uh, that we were just going to put the plan on, uh, on the, on for the record whenever we got to that point. But, uh, if you do want to apply for grants, you do have to get council approval of that plan before you can actually apply for those grants. And who knows when that's going to happen, but that we will have it in place. All right. Uh, any comments? Uh, motion?
Move to, move to approve.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion by Mayo. Do we have a second? Sorry. By Olson, that we approve the Churchill Street Corridor Plan. Uh, any discussion? Colin?
Uh, I was approached by one of the landowners in the area, and, uh, they had some comments related to the, the, the development, and the idea of development, uh, on that road. Um, one of the things they noticed, um, was that, uh, the amount of truck traffic that seems to be coming down Churchill, uh, is causing some of the problems that are, are trying to be addressed in this, this plan, and suggested that a truck route, uh, an approved truck route, perhaps, uh, documented by, uh, signage out toward the roundabout, and then the, I guess it's 5422 corridor, might be appropriate and, and useful for, uh, directing truck traffic away from Churchill Street. Another comment was, uh, related to the Harding Street exit from the, the schools. We have identified the intersection that goes in by the, uh, uh, school as, as one of the problem intersections. They identified, uh, I guess, this is before I was in the area, that Harding Street was an exit from the schools at one point, probably 10-plus years ago. And we should consider, uh, using that again if, instead of, uh, uh, lots of, uh, expenditures, uh, relative to this plan. Uh, also bike routes. I think we discussed this a bit while we were talking about this plan. Instead of, uh, running bike routes on Churchill Street, perhaps a parallel Street 10th or 8th would be more appropriate. This was kind of also, uh, a thought to our Fulton Street corridor, where Union Street is probably, in, in their opinion, mine too, I, actually, I share this opinion, that, uh, Union Street would be a better corridor for bikes, keep bikes away from, uh, at least, uh, the main, uh, travel area, especially if trucks continue to go down there. And then one of the concerns at being a property owner was that more trees and sidewalks, wider sidewalks, uh, would, would create more of a burden on local property owners to clean and maintain, uh, the trees, number one, or the, the leaves from the trees, and, uh, snow removal. So there were some concerns there. Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Colin. Any other comments? I, I mean, Justin, maybe at a future meeting, we could, or if you can right now, just talk about the truck traffic on Churchill Street. And, I mean, we actually do have.
Well, so truck traffic on Churchill Street is, or has been a challenge for a number of years. The creation of the bypass, uh, which is the section of road or highway from the roundabout down to Highway 10, was completed a number of years ago to alleviate that. It was, uh, through a DOT project. However, truck drivers still use Churchill, because it's a, still a very good, um, off and on ramp there. And they follow their GPS units, and that's the way they go. We've looked into a truck route through the city in designating that and adopting it, which we could do. But there is state statute on where trucks can and cannot go. And I don't recall the exact distance, but if they're within so many miles of their destination, they can pretty much use any street they want, um, which makes it difficult. And, uh, I'm sorry for being kind of vague, but I know the Foundry, uh, Gusmer, a few of the other bigger industries are like within that distance to Highway 10. So what we did, we have done in the past, is reached out to those industry, a, a number of other ones. You know, Fox Brothers, anyone else uses large trucks, and just said, hey, can you please stay off those roads and go on these roads? And we've, have done pretty well with that in that regard, but, um, so there is still a challenge remaining, because it's not illegal by state statute, even if we did adopt a truck route. But it's, it's something that we have looked into and have tried to, uh, address.
Thanks, Justin. Any other comments? We do, we do have a motion, and it's second on the floor. Any other comments? All right. So if you vote aye, you are voting to approve this Churchill Street Corridor Plan. Barbara, call the roll.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Eric Halverson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel. Whoops. Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Who am I missing?
I don't know. Did everybody get called? Demetri.
Demetri Martin, sorry.
Sorry.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Yep. All right. Uh, Colin, thanks for your comments too on that. Uh, we'll take those as we go through the process. Uh, next up, we have, uh, Resolution Number 1560. This is a resolution to rename Michigan Street to Cronkway, and Harding Street north of Royalton Street to Habercorn Court. And, uh, I'm actually going to turn it over to Aaron.
Thanks, Mayor Smith. Uh, this was announced, I think, two council meetings ago. This is something we were talking about. And as mentioned, just to recap, uh, over the last months, or maybe more than that, years, uh, when we kind of knew that the public works facility was going to be at Old Habercorn Field. I know the mayor, um, had done a lot of brainstorming, and we did as dirt on how to, um, kind of honor, uh, the fact of, of the history of Habercorn Field and, and not forget what it was. And then, uh, also started talking about, um, the contributions of Coach John Cronkowitz, and, um, how to do the same for those contributions. So here we are. We do, in order to do that, we do need to formally adopt, uh, or pass a resolution to rename those two streets. And I'll read the resolution, but, uh, prior to that, I do want to just kind of talk about some of our, what our plans are for it. We are planning to have an open house, uh, on June 14th, which is a Friday. Uh, that open house will be late afternoon and early evening. Towards the end of that open house, we would do an official ceremony, uh, that would kind of commemorate the streets, both of them. Justin, I know, has been working on a lot of historical stuff. It's really neat, and looking back at, uh, the contributions of both, it's pretty impressive. And, uh, then actually, we would, we would fold it into a Lakeman game, uh, to also kind of help, um, show off the new lights, uh, recognize some of the large donors and all the donors to that project. And then, actually, Cronk would, uh, throw the first pitch. Uh, we talked about doing it to both of his sons. One would be a football, and one would be a baseball. Um, he coached both and won state championships in both. When I texted his son, or Ted was texting his son, he said, yeah, no problem, I can show up and catch. But I don't know if he can get it to the, across the plate. So we had to check. He's, he didn't like that comment. He said he can get it there. So at that, I'll, uh, that's kind of what, uh, we plan to do on June 14th. Um, we do have a rain date later in July, but we'll, uh, make all those announcements sometime soon. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas the City of Opaque seeks to honor the legacy and contributions of educators and coaches John Cronkowitz and Leroy Habercorn, as well as pay homage to the former high school athletic complex formerly known as Habercorn Field. And whereas Habercorn Field holds significant historical and sentimental value to the residents of Opaque, serving as a symbol of a community pride and athletic achievement. Whereas Coach Cronkowitz served as a dedicated high school educator, football coach, and baseball coach in Opaque for many years, leaving an indelible mark on the community and its athletic programs. And whereas John Cronkowitz's exceptional leadership, mentorship, and commitment to excellence have been recognized through his induction into prestigious halls of fame, including the Wisconsin Football Coaches Hall of Fame in 2008, and the National High School Athletic Coaches Hall of Fame in 2018. And now therefore, be it resolved at the City Council of the City of Opaque, Wisconsin, that Michigan Street within the city limits, as described with an Exhibit B, shall be renamed Cronkway in honor of John Cronkowitz, Coach John Cronkowitz, reflecting his lasting impact on the community and its athletic legacy. Two, Harding Street, specifically the section of north, the section north of Royalton Street, as described with an Exhibit A, shall be renamed Habercorn Court as a tribute to Leroy Habercorn and the former high school athletic complex of Habercorn Field, preserving its memory and significance for future generations. Three, the city clerk is directed to take all necessary actions to effectuate the renaming of Michigan Street and Cronkway, and Harding Street north of Royalton Street to Habercorn Court, including but not limited to notifying relevant governmental agencies, official records, maps, and coordinating with local residents and businesses affected by the name changes. The resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage. Adapted by City Council of City of Opaque in the day of whatever, May 21st.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Uh, so what we're looking for tonight is just to, to be able to, uh, go forward and, and get those name, street names changed, and you'll get more information as we get closer to that event. We'd be looking for a motion to approve this resolution.
Move to approve Resolution 1560. Second.
Uh, motion by Pritchatsky, second by Dexter, that we approve Resolution Number 1560. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Halverson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dextrow.
Aye.
Demetri Martin.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Uh, next up, uh, 2024 Capital Road Raid, Roadway Repay Project, uh, alley add-on. Justin?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, so this starts on 179 and to the very end of the packet. So this is an add-on to our, uh, project for this year. Uh, we, the council has already approved, uh, MCC or Murphy Concrete Construction, uh, earlier in January, for, uh, this project, which was bid out, um, and they were awarded an amount of $229,100. Uh, this was noted at the time to be well under budget of $350,000. So we talked at the time, since we have, um, observed such good, uh, bids, that we would continue to look at other sections in the city that would need addressing. Um, so since then, we have maintained conversation with the contractor. Uh, we were looking to add on, uh, the alleyway, um, just the east of the one we plan on doing underneath the project. Uh, so this is the alleyway, uh, from Union down to Badger, or, uh, from Opaque Motel down to the Lute. Uh, that additional cost is attached, um, as, within a proposal of $13,500. Uh, that, I feel, is a very good price still, uh, you know, as we compare that to the one that was within the competitive bid, as shown in 183. Aaron, please. The two alleyways, the two downtown alleyways that we, uh, plan to get now are shown side by side. So the one underneath the bed, um, $15,200, this add-on, $13,500, you can see slightly smaller. The overall configuration, pretty much the same. Uh, slightly lesser price. We also looked at, uh, a section of Washington Street, uh, from basically Sessions down to Fulton. Uh, so with the Granite Street project, we completed, uh, a, two blocks of Washington, on either, one on the other side of Granite. Uh, this section was left alone. There's a few pictures showing the existing condition. The dark, the, if you can go down, please. Yeah. So the dark, or the very black, is a seal coating that is wearing off. Underneath of that, uh, is a lot of cracking. Uh, once that seal coat works off, we will have a lot of cracks to deal with, which means quite a bit of maintenance if we don't do anything about it. So the options are to, uh, mill and pave it now, or crack seal a whole bunch of it, uh, this coming, well, soon, within our programs. Uh, that adder is also included in, um, within, uh, looking at that price of $20,935,000. So again, a mill and overlay of the existing surface. So going back up to the memo, I know I'm making you jump around and earning your keep, Aaron, but, um, So going back up to the memo, I know I'm making you jump around and earning your keep, Aaron, but um, the very first page shows what we have budgeted, what we have already approved. Uh, and then the two add-ons, which would leave roughly eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars remaining in this borrow project. The last section that we are still looking into um, would be a, a block of Harrison Street, which was not done. Uh, that is, we're talking with uh, DOT personnel. Uh, State Highway forty-nine is going to be repaved or reconstructed this summer as well. So getting a quote from their contractor to pull through our block and then onto their project to make uh, one straight pave, one less joint. Um, so we're still looking into that. Expect that to be around twenty-five thousand-ish. So very similar to the Washington uh, street block. Um, so kind of do the math in your head, we'd still have quite a bit of money left. And from there, I think we would just say enough for this year. Uh, so I try to make it a little helpful by showing the updates in our nice beautiful teal color of our city colors. Overall, I mean, I'm just looking for an action to increase the award amount of MCC from two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred up to two hundred and sixty-three thousand, five thirty-five. Uh, all that funding coming from the general obligation bonds uh, to cover uh, these extra add-ons.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there, uh, we, we've been talking about in the future doing Fulton Street. Um, that section of Wash, uh, North Washington Street, is there anything underground that would have to be replaced uh, while Fulton Street is being done that would make this, uh, you know, we'll have to rip it up in a few years anyway?
Hmm, no. Um, farmers and RE/MAX, I believe, both come out to Fulton Street with their utilities.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody want to make a motion to approve this, these add-ons?
Motion to approve these add-ons.
Second? Motion by Dijkstra, second by Peterson, that we approve these twenty twenty-four capital roadway uh, add-ons. Any discussion? Barbara Colerole?
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Helverson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatski.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Corey Nagel.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. All right, next up, uh, under, we have the uh, thirty-minute discussion. Aaron wants to present and to you tonight, uh, forecasting for general fund revenues and expenses. Uh, while he's getting ready, let's take a six and a half minute break here.
Good project management there.
Thank you. I have no idea how long that went. Everybody back? Uh, Aaron, you're, you're on.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, um, I have handed out a packet. Uh, I did want to print this packet and with the memo, uh, explaining it, just so you can kind of take this home. Um, let what we're going to talk about here sink in, uh, look at numbers uh, in your free time and then ask uh, any questions in the upcoming weeks. We're not asking for any action here tonight. We're just here to go over information and a planning tool, budgetarily, a budgetary planning tool that we've been working with, uh, RW Baird on, uh, just to help uh, make as informed decisions as we can. And also take a look at and really understand kind of what the biggest inputs to our budgets are, both in revenues and in expenses. Um, I ha, I'll go through a number of different uh, specific things. And we're going to start on what I'll call our control scenario. Our control scenario is on your first page, page one. And that is what I have up on the screen right now. I'm going to go through a number of different things. So you can see right here in the blue, uh, I have our revenues highlighted. I'm going to start with what I have in yellow right now. And that's our taxes, our general fund levy. Uh, whenever we talk about net new construction numbers, our taxes and our general fund levy is what we're talking about really being um, limited by that net new construction number. So as we work our way through the years, you can see we have two thousand twenty-four, five, all the way through to two thousand and thirty-four, as far as projections go. Um, and then I have a number at the end of this, and right now I have one point seven five. So that number on the right is what we are projecting, that the net new construction average may be over the course of that time period. Um, you'll see other scenarios in which we have it a little higher. You'll see others in which we'll have it a little lower. Um, but we feel like that's a reasonable uh, assumption to make over that time period. Hard to kind of do on here, so bear with me. The next one I want to explain, uh, this one really is an in and an out, but I'm going to explain it anyways. So our other big, largest levy is our debt service levy. And we had a lot of conversations about that through this last budget process. Uh, that is something that did go up this last year by a fairly substantial amount. And we did talk about how we can kind of take two larger jumps or um, we can take kind of one, one larger jump, which is what we did, um, and then it can level off from there. And that's what you see here. So what we have as a, an estimate here for forecasts, I have it at one seven five as well. So that would increase just with the amount that we're growing. So if all of a sudden, if that was at one, two point two five, it could be that. If it was at one point two five from a net new construction standpoint, uh, it could be that. But I have it just mimicking uh, the amount that we're growing in any given year uh, to keep taxes relatively flat. Let's go back here. A lot of the other ones, uh, you'll see pilot payments. Uh, we do have some like kind of payment in lieu of taxes uh, from our utilities uh, and other agreements. I do have that as a negative one percent projection, and that's because our utilities do have depreciation that's factored in. And we do see those pilot payments often go down over time, uh, which is why you'll see a negative there. So that's a revenue that does actually move down. The next one, oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, I'm just back to the debt service fund levy.
Mm-hmm.
Why would the debt service fund increase in relation to um, new construction? I mean, doesn't it only increase if we take on new debt?
It, yeah, great question. Uh, so I'm going to highlight this number here, Dimitri. Up in this, so when we looked at these debt service levy um, projections and obligations, um, our number that we have to get to in about ten years is in that one point nine million. Because that's what our principal and interest obligations are. Um, so this is, it doesn't have to do that. So to, to your point, you could use, I'll tell you right now, that if we did this, you would have debt service fund balance left. So this kind of preserves debt service fund balance as a tool for council um, to utilize to lower that in any of those years or any stretch of years. But at some point, it needs to get to that one point nine million-ish, because that's what's tied to the public works facility.
I thought the increase that we voted on last time was to get us to where we needed to be for the public works facility.
The increase to what we voted on last time was to get us to where we needed to be for the public works facility payments um, at this time. And it was also to get us to where we, where we felt like we could mimic mirroring our natural growth, so that the impacts wouldn't be felt. So if we didn't do that, you might see in two thousand twenty-five, instead of just mirroring our natural growth, which is what is projected here, it would be, it could be another, you know, eight, nine percent or whatever that may have been, which would have been a jump.
Well, and correct me if I'm wrong too, Aaron, but we are using fund balance too to, to, to pay debt service in the next few years too.
Uh, yeah, we're using um, it's, it can get decided on, on every budget process. But yes, this does feather in using some debt service fund balance, as well as some transfers from TIF eight, which owes debt service fund levy. Or not the fund levy, the debt service fund. Um, so it does have a mixture of both of those. All right, keep moving down. Uh, I think I went over the pilot payment. The next one is, this is a larger change uh, to our revenues. So you'll see here I have three point three eight percent. Uh, this is our state shared revenue, our county and municipal aid. Um, our state shared revenue, that, really over the course of the last ten years, you've seen this be a negative. So it's, this is good. It's a, you'll see a positive three point three eight percent. And that's because it's now tied to the sales tax. Um, that three point three eight percent is the sales tax average increase when looking back twenty years. I'll tell you, when you look back ten years, that number is about a percent higher, four point four-ish. Um, we felt like that was, that basically took a couple of negative years out of the equation, uh, which we didn't want to do to be conservative in budgeting and forecasting. We went back twenty years, which brought it down to three point three eight percent. The other ones are just I have as a one percent average increase, and that's basically us just keeping up um, with our fee schedules and, and making sure that we're accounting for inflation and some of our other fees. Uh, next, we're going to go to expenditures. And the main thing I want to hit on here, we basically, to, to summarize, we have expenditures uh, in non-personnel items being at about three percent per year from an inflation rate. And we have uh, personnel increases shown here. They're separated out. And you'll see across here, two thousand twenty-five, three percent, two percent, three percent, two percent. So in this control, control scenario, we would have cost of living increases that would be at those amounts, alternating three percent and two percent over the course of ten years. And that historically is pretty close to what it's been. If, if not, maybe a little higher. Uh, so that is our control scenario. And then if you bring it down all the way to the bottom in this pink, you'll see where our projected fund balance is if we have all these assumptions and these inputs. Okay, so you can see we're pretty much at uh, it's a good, it's good, right? It's, we are above zero and we have break even budgets um, over the course of these times. Now, I will say off of this control scenario that this is, these are reasonable assumptions and expectations. Um, but our last two years are, can be examples of anomalies in which it's not in these, in this ballpark. Last year, we had three retirees that were with the city for a long time and we had large payouts. And if you remember, we had a hundred and eighty thousand dollar deficit at the end of two thousand twenty-two in the general fund. Then we had vacancies in two thousand twenty-three. We also had abnormally high interest proceeds. Um, and we had um, uh, I would, our second highest year ever from a building fee standpoint. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we're looking at a, a surplus of several hundred thousand dollars. So in any given, now if, if one of those becomes a trend, you can, this is a fluid document, right? This is just a tool that we're always going to go back to and look at. And if all of a sudden the control point doesn't make sense to be the control point anymore, we can change that. And we can make decisions off of that. Um, but this is something we plan to use in our budgeting process as we move forward. Uh, let's see here. All right, so with that being said, I did create a number of variations just to kind of show you the impact of when one is tweaked just a little bit, how much of a difference that makes. So the first one is page two. Okay, so let's go. Sorry, I'm going to have to look back and get this right. Okay, so this one just simply shows all of the same control points with the same cost of living increases. And the one variable we changed was the net new construction. So when you see, when we go through strategic planning, and one of the reasons that accelerating economic development is not only one of our top priorities, but is many municipalities' top priorities throughout the state, is because how uh, economic development and continued growth really help us continue to provide the services to the levels um, that at least maintain the levels, um, if not enhance them. If we go down a half a percent, so instead of one point seven five percent, we go to one point two five percent, I'm just going to go straight to the bottom. And you can see, we were a break even budget for all of the ten years. And if we grow at a lesser pace, you can see what these are. You see a lot of negative numbers, ten years out, we're over a hundred thousand dollars in a deficit. Lot of. All right, next one. Okay, so this is the opposite side of that spectrum. This is a, a positive net new construction. So if we're a half a percent over our projections and we're averaging a two point two five percent increase over the coast, course of ten years, and we'll go to the bottom. And you can see what those numbers are. We're break even at about, uh, in the one seven five, we were about a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand dollars in the hole at one point two five. And at two point two five, we have a surplus in ten years of approaching two hundred thousand dollars uh, with keeping the other controls in place. And most of these years are, um, or a lot of the years are over a hundred thousand. So that illustrates that. The next scenario. The next scenario is we're going to re, return to the control net new construction of one point seven five. And we're going to go to a sales tax that's lower than the twenty-year average. So if the sales tax is two point three eight instead of three point three eight, how does that impact our overall budgets? And you can see, that hurts us in a pretty big way. In ten years, we're also looking at a hundred thousand dollar deficit. And you can see kind of where that is in each of the years. Next scenario. The opposite of that. This is increasing the sales tax by one percent off the control. Uh, so four point three eight. So this would mimic what the ten-year average has been. And if that happens, that makes, that's a big positive. You can see we're at a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars uh, in ten years as a surplus. And you can see all of the other um, surpluses over the course of that time. Okay, the next scenario is we're going to, we're going to start playing with uh, cost of living or staff wage increases. All right, so this one, you know, we, through our strategic planning process, not only did we talk about economic development, but we also talked about compensation, employee retention, uh, and compensation is a part of employee retention. We talked about potentially doing, we've talked in multiple meetings about doing a compensation study. So we did here, and this is a guess. There's nothing scientific to this other than um, this is what some communities who have gone through compensation studies have done. They may have an average, uh, to execute that compensation study fully, they may have an average increase uh, in a one-year period. they may have an average increase, uh, in a one-year period, uh, of seven percent for employees over time. Now, some employees might be over the seven percent and some employees might be under that seven percent. We're saying seven percent on average. So given the, we've returned to our control scenario and all of our other inputs. Uh, but we, this is just moving to seven percent in two thousand twenty-five and then returning to our two, three, two, three, two, three alt, um, uh, alternate for cost of living after that. And because compensation is, um, such a large part of, uh, our expenses at the city and is with all cities, you can see what a challenging spot that that puts the city in moving forward. Pretty large deficits, see two twelve in ten years. And you can see, um, all of the other deficits, uh, from there. And the reason for that is because that's a compounding number course. All right, next, let's go to a staff wage increase at, so okay, maybe we didn't wanna do it in one year. Maybe we wanted, let's say we do, there's a compensation study. And let's say we do it over the course of three years to lessen the burden. What does that look like? All right, so you can see up here I have highlighted four, four, four. So that'd be four percent in twenty-five, four percent in twenty-six, four percent in twenty-seven. And then we return to our two, three, two, three, two, three. And you can see that we still have some negative numbers, uh, although about half of the total deficit at the end of ten years, um, of, if we did it all in one year. So you can see that's a better scenario, still, um, a scenario in which other things would have to be done, assuming all the other inputs remain the same. Uh, next. Staff wage increases at seven percent. So returning to that. Staff wa- uh, increases at seven percent, so executing it in one year and then returning to the two, three, two, three, all the other control inputs are the same. This time though, we did put in a factor that we, um, reduced s- full-time equivalent staffing levels by approximately two full-time equivalent positions through attrition over the course of two years. So one in two thousand twenty-five and one in two thousand twenty-six. With an assumption that those positions, full compensation packages around eighty thousand dollars. So in essence, staff would be getting thinner through retirements or voluntary resignations or, uh, when those opportunities came up. And you can see what that does, uh, to the numbers over the course of time. And, and really this is, you know, this is pretty close to break even. Um, you got some above, you got some below. Um, you know, when you get to that thirty-three, that's, that's getting further away from zero than we want, but, you know, these are small, relatively small changes away from a break even budget. And our last scenario is the same. Uh, we reduce full-time equivalent by two positions over the course of two years through voluntary attrition, but it's plugged into the three-year execution strategy. So four percent, four percent, four percent. And you can see what that does to the bottom line in the pink here. And that's more of a manageable, actually you see some pretty substantial, uh, surpluses there. So the reality is, is there are a million different inputs that we can change and tweak. And I, I've put some fairly minimal changes in all of these scenarios. They could be greater on both ends. One of the things that, you know, when we do have high net new construction numbers, we typically also have high building permit fees. Uh, so you could have any given year in which you have high building permit fees and net new construction numbers where you have surpluses of potentially two hundred fifty thousand plus, uh, like we're expecting in two thousand twenty-three. Um, however, those might offset some of the years in which we have to pay out two, three, uh, large sick banks or, or something else happens, or the economy, uh, goes the other way and you have sales tax numbers that decrease. So again, this is just, this is just to get us kinda thinking and to help kinda educate and, uh, help us make informed decisions when we get into the budget time. When we're, we're making, uh, decisions on compensation, whether to do studies or whether to not. And this isn't to say, don't do it, it's not to say, do it. Um, it's just to, to recognize some of the things that may have to be looked at if it's done and, um, and executed. And, um, so that's really the purpose of, of showing you all these numbers, but. Mayor, do you have any other comments? Did I miss anything?
Uh, no, well, a couple, I guess, I'm sorry. Uh, Aaron, nice job, um, putting this together. I think it gives you a lot of scenarios. Obviously, there are variables, no matter what line you look at, there could be variables. And Aaron brought up a few of those already. The one thing that I get out of this is that although we believe that, um, we need to take a better look at our compensation package for our employees, I'm not sure we're prepared to do that yet. As you can see with the numbers that we have in front of us, um, if, if the scenario did come out to us, the pay study said that, uh, you know, we're looking at seven percent, you know, we would be hard fought to find that money. And, and if we did, how would we find that money? And if we did the pay study and weren't able to react to it or enact that, uh, that would probably be worse than even doing the, the pay study, you know, not doing the pay study. So we got some planning to do there, obviously. Our hands are tied in, in a few areas, obviously, as we go through this. There are many other scenarios. I do like this because this gets us thinking forward for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five budget. We're also in negotiations with the, uh, police union at this time too. So this will be helpful for us at that time too. And I know that Aaron has taken the time to share this a couple of times with the department heads too. So they've, uh, had a good, a good view of what's going on there. So, um, again, uh, I, I don't have anything else. Anybody have any questions? Colin, go ahead.
Aaron, at the, the top table where you have the numbers for wage and salaries, like for instance, in twenty twenty-four, it's two point six nine six million. Where in the bottom, and I assume it's under expenditures, what numbers there add up to that two point two six million? Or maybe you can't tell me that, maybe it's part of each one or, or whatnot.
Yeah, it's a great question. It is part of each one. And then you'll see at the very bottom of expenditures, before it gets to total expenditures, it talks about personnel increases. So basically that is, uh, divvied up amongst the other, the four numbers, general government, public safety, public works, and, uh, culture and recreation. And then once we move into two thousand twenty-five, the increase is separated. And you'll see that in personnel increases, uh, each year moving forward. And that, um, is, so the one sixty, like you'll see in two thousand twenty-six, it's, then it's a combination of the personnel increases and then kinda the base, which is tied in the other numbers.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, I just wanted to see what, what, I, I guess, like some of the expenses are trucks and whatever parts and whatever else, and others are, are wages. But I wanted to see what, where was within the expenditures amount. But that's not possible in this scenario right now.
In this tool, I think the goal was to make it, to simplify it as much as possible.
Makes sense.
Um, we certainly have detailed reports that show that too, but.
I think it's important to note too that, remember, this is just for the general fund. Uh, this does not include the utility funds, obviously. Except for, is we'll pack online in on this?
Nope, this is just the general fund.
So they're separate too.
And it, like, it, to Dimitri's questions, it does show debt service fund, but it's like an in and an out. Uh, so really, when you see the bottom line, it's, it's just general fund bottom line. And actually, speaking of that, I did forget to mention one thing. These notes on the left, you'll see I just have some notes in, under revenues and expenses. So every time we go through a budget process, like, all department heads are always trying to get creative and trying to be more efficient. And these are notes for what our plans are to be more efficient and to help our situation in two thousand twenty-five. So you can see, we opened TIF eleven and TIF twelve fairly recently. Um, and be, when a TIF is in its infancy, it doesn't have the amount of money to pay the general fund and administrative costs that it does when it's a little, uh, more mature. So you'll see those ramp up a little bit, and we did add twenty-five thousand dollars of revenue to the general fund to pay for administrative costs. And I'll tell you that, uh, that is more than justifiable with the amount of time that staff is spending on, uh, the development projects out there. Another thing, we did reduce a transfer to the airport in two thousand twenty-six. So typically, the general fund will subsidize the airport to a certain level to make the airport fund balance. And that's been the big focus at the airport and, and generating more fuel sales and, and the new T-hanger project, which will generate about twenty-five thousand dollars per year in rent. That starts in twenty twenty-six. So we did make that change in this projection because we fully expect that to be coming. Well, I kinda started at the bottom. Another thing, uh, that we talked about, and this is actually talked about and, and, uh, plugged in here uh, with the help of some staff input as we had these conversations and department head meetings. Um, there are some underutilized wellness programs that are costing us, um, a little bit of money at this time. And then the employer rewards program that we have, uh, in, implemented over the last couple of years would, would remain in this scenario. But it would change from a, an option of a cash or time off program to a time off specific program. Uh, so that would reduce expenditures there. Uh, and then also revenues as we look forward. Uh, Justin obviously vacated his temporary office in which what, which was the old HFH building by the rec center. Uh, we are factoring in some rent money coming into that building in two thousand twenty-five. We'll talk more about that. And then we also have the water utility, which is paying rent to the general fund because of, um, they are housed in the public works facility, which was paid for through general obligation bonds and not water bonds. So that's the trade-off is the water now pays rent to the general fund. And that's a new revenue, um, in these projections.
All right, thank you, Aaron. I, sorry, if you don't mind, we, it looks like we have about ten minutes before that storm hits. So it might be appropriate for us to, uh, uh, finish up this meeting and, uh, and we can have this discussion more at a future meeting. At least you might get to your car before you get back. So, uh, Aaron, if you're okay with that, you'll have to be. We'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Egud, second by Olson, to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, I know. Motion carried, we're adjourned at eight twelve P M. Be safe, everybody, have a great night. Brewers are winning, by the way.